Bye better.
Welcome everyone to the July 26 City Council Work Session. My first question of you is, I can go into executive session if there are things that you need to say to Mark around his performance review that you would like to say in executive session. So I'm looking around the table to see if anybody has anything that they require an executive session for, and I see no one.
Alan?
Alan?
No, thank you.
Okay, so.
That'd be nice.
Yes.
Let them in.
Yeah, not fans of sleeping in the park.
And Greg's here, that's good.
Yeah, Greg's coming in.
Hi. So we are in this little, we made a decision Greg, that none of us needed an executive session. Had anything to say to Mark that needed to be said in executive session, unless you do, we're not going to have an executive session. We'll just say what we're going to say in regular session. Okay. Are we, everybody knows they can come in if they want?
Unlocking the doors.
Huh?
She's unlocking the doors.
Okay, that's good. I just want to give them a sh-
There's quite a lineup there.
I know, I know. I think it's about something called camping.
Yes.
I think some of George and my neighbors have some issues.
So as you know, the first item up is the police auditor's performance review, and I'm going to turn that over to our human resource folks, so.
Good afternoon Mayor and Council. I'm Denise Smith with Human Resources at the city, and I once again had the opportunity to facilitate and support you through your performance evaluation of police auditor Mark Gisner. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to you for your discussion with him.
So for the public, would you please briefly, one of you, go through what, the kind of information that we got for doing this review, and what we all have to look at?
Where it came from, you bet.
Yeah.
So the process starts a little bit early in the springtime when we actually contact the citizen review board, and they do a survey process that's both for their board information and their annual report, and then we also use that information to inform you all. And then we do a community survey where we invite, I think we probably had 35 members of the community that work in different capacities with Mark during the course of the year, identified by the council and Mark, and get their input based on the dimensions you established for him several years ago. We compile that information for you. Mark does a self-evaluation each year that summarizes a memo to you. And then in human resources, we put that all together into a packet, send that out to all the council members so they have the opportunity to review that, do their individual reviews, and then what you've received now is the summarization of all of your individual reviews, Mark's evaluation, the community input, and the citizen review board input to come to the conclusions on how he's done in this last year.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
It's good for people to know that we've gone through a process and a pretty elaborate one. I would just start out and make a few comments, and then if it's all right with you guys, I'm just going to go around the table and just let you each say what you want to say, and then when we're through with that, ask Mark if he has anything he wants to say, and then we can move into the second conversation about compensation. So I would just say, from my look at all of the materials, that it appears to me that everybody feels very well-served by your work, Mark, and appreciative of the professional way you go about your business, and the contribution you've been making to our public safety system, and the contribution you've been making to the community. And so I couldn't be more personally, I could not be more pleased with what I see in that report. All of us could get a few comments about who we should talk to or who we shouldn't, or how long we should talk, or how, or not. I mean, I think we all get those kind of comments, say to us personally as people in office and people in position, but I think the comments about your professional skill, your work with the police, your work with the community, your work with the civilian review board are all outstanding, and really appreciate your work and want to thank you for that. All right, Chris?
Oh, thank you. I would absolutely agree with everything that the mayor said. In reviewing the material, not only have the nine members of this group evaluated you as either excellent or exceeds expectation good, but also from the tenor of the comments, it's very clear that you have brought a new level of communication, integrity, informativeness, and transparency to the job that we have really craved and are now receiving. The comments are all good, and when I look at, there's always the part where you zero in on what could people do better? And I don't see that necessarily they're saying you should do something better as a form of criticism, it's more like a wish list. They're saying, wow, these are the kinds of things, now that we've achieved this level of effectiveness, what more could we add to it? And it all boils down to how do we interact with the public? I think you are in an excellent position to be that person, to be able to interact with the public in an even more effective way. And I don't know if that is something that just springs, or whether it's something that we work on developing, and I look forward to doing that, because I think without violating HR or criminal rules, maybe there's some kinds of things we can do, but if that's the only criticism we can come up with, you're doing an outstanding job.
Council President.
Thank you. Before I start on my comments, I would just like to bring up one comment that Counselor Taylor, who's not able to be here today, expressed, and that her concern is that she doesn't feel that we're getting enough feedback from some of the complainants, and she doesn't know if they're satisfied with the job that you've done with the people or not. And to that, I would just like to say that, you know, we can send out all the surveys and all the questionnaires and ask all the questions, but it's up to that person to actually come back with that information. And I know that in the situation that you're in dealing with people, there's a lot of apprehension on the complainant's part because of their perceived or actual bad interaction with the police department, and it's kind of hard sometimes for the average person to separate you from them. So I don't know how we're going to address that issue about getting more feedback from the complainants other than what we're already doing, but that was a concern that Counselor Taylor, Betty, brought up, so I just wanted to bring that out. And my own opinions, I think the city of Eugene is extremely lucky to have you, Mark. You know, when you came on board several years back, you actually started in the hole and had to dig your way out of a big hole, and you've done an absolutely outstanding job doing that. You know, as far as you're getting involved in the community, your work with the neighborhood groups showing up at some of the meetings, that kind of stuff has been really good. In particular, I like the fact that the way you interacted with the University of Oregon when they were first starting their discussions about going to their own police department as opposed to the public safety department. So I think your work there was beneficial for the entire community and not just the university. You know, I've never seen you act anything other than the utmost professional manner. You know, you can come across as easygoing and open, but still maintain that professionalism. I think that's very key to this type of job, and I just think, you know, I agree with the mayor and what Chris has already said, and I don't know what else to say other than I think you're doing an excellent job, and thank you for your service to our community, and I hope we can keep you on board.
George Brown?
Well, I'd like to echo most of those comments. I don't really have a lot to add to my evaluation of the various dimensions. I think Mark's done a good, excellent job in all of the departments of his job, and runs a real good crew over there. It's pretty amazing that three people turn out that amount of work and stay in budget and that amount of quality work, in my view. So, yeah, I, council's always kept informed of trends and important cases, and it's kind of a tricky balancing act. You know, you can't be advocating for the police or for the complainants, you have to be, remain neutral and yet, you know, oversee the investigations, and that also advocate for changes in the department based on things that, you know, could be improved on, and then nationwide trends too. There's, things are happening here, they're usually happening in many other departments around the country, and so I think he's done a very good job. Thanks.
Greg?
Thanks Mayor. I'll just echo the comments that have, you know, come around the table already, and what I made in my written evaluation. I think you're doing an excellent job, Mark. I appreciate the fact that as a new counselor, you, you know, took, made the effort to, you know, reach out to me and to sit down and meet with me. And, you know, I want to say that, and I kind of underscore some of the comments that I made in the written format, and that is, is that I think that you've established a level of credibility and respect, both internally in the police department as well as externally with the community. And that internal level of credibility, I think, is incredibly important, because I believe that the command staff and the line staff of the police department deeply respect you, respect your professionalism, and respect the way that you go about your job. And, you know, just based on the, you know, the reports that we've received from you, and the last report that we received, I think about a week and a half ago, very well-detailed, excellent research, fabulous documentation, I think that this builds a base for us to go forward in the future. And it does prove that, you know, the ordinance creating the police auditor has worked, and is working well now.
Thanks Greg. How about you Claire?
Thank you. Yeah, I have to concur with my colleagues around the table. I think you've been doing an excellent job, and I also really appreciate the information that you forward, and not just to us but to the public as well, and I think that's very important. And I think the high marks you receive from the civilian review board members also speaks to the quality of work that you're bringing to the city, so thank you. You know, I made some short additional notes, you know, you're professional, approachable, collaborative while still remaining independent, consistent, knowledgeable, and always seeking as much transparency as possible given our particular public records laws here in Oregon. And, you know, I also appreciate your efforts to do community outreach, and I really understand the challenge of holding events and not having huge response from the public, and it's very challenging, and I think, you know, one may be a shift in tactics, and I'm sure you're doing this as well, but to maybe emphasize getting yourself invited to participate in events or meetings that are organized by others, and that you're providing some briefing or update or perspective rather than trying to host your own, which I think you might want to do occasionally, but it is a lot of staff time, I understand, and when you don't get the bang for your buck, it can be frustrating. So that might just be another tactical shift in how you think about the community outreach, but thank you very much for your service.
Mike?
Thank you Mayor. Certainly, I echo what's been said around the table. And I would also add that I remember the campaign and the community discussion around the creation of your office and the CRB in the first place, and I remember having seen and spoken with officers about how they felt looking at the creation of this citizen person who was going to look over the shoulder of Internal Affairs and watch investigations at them, and it made them nervous, and they were a little, you know, concerned, and they viewed that adversarially at first, but when you get, you know, an ex-cop like this fellow here who can say those kind of things about you, I suppose that speaks pretty well, you know? Because I know, serving on the police commission, that there's great respect for your professionalism and your opinion and your capabilities. One of the other pieces I particularly appreciate is that inherent in the job of one of us around this table is that our positions are political by nature. We have to say things sometimes that are controversial in order to move the community discussion in a particular way, but it is more appropriately staff's role to try to diminish conflict and to diminish controversy, and to do so in a way that heals the community and brings people together. And I want to say that's a hallmark of what you've done so far in your role there, is taking something that was more conflict-oriented, more, you know, controversial in what was said and done there, and made it something that's done professionally, fairly, justly, and it's widely recognized to be so in the community. And I, you know, good on you, that's really good. And I can say, serving on the police commission, that I know that your work to bring particular finite suggestions about how police policy can be altered or changed or modified in order to help the officers do a better job's been particularly helpful. Your explanations to police commission about how we might evaluate warrantless searches, chases, all the kinds of policy questions that revolve around how police do their job that made the community safer, so thank you for your work.
Alan?
Is it my turn Mayor?
It is.
Well, I'll pile on to love fest here. I thank Mark for doing an excellent job as police auditor. You have integrity, you communicate really well, you conduct yourself in a professional manner, you're exceptionally well-informed and knowledgeable about your subject area, and you're respected by the police, the community, the CRB, and the council, and that's a hard thing to do in itself. And all of that, you still maintain your independence as a police auditor, and I think we are lucky to have you as our police auditor, and I hope you stay here a long time. To make your game go to the next level, which is not a criticism of what you've done, it's the only place I can see that, where we could emphasize more of your time would be outreach to the community. I think when you do that, the city is better, the police department's better, and the police auditor's office is better when we do that kind of outreach. So I think you're doing a great job, Mark. Thanks.
I'm going to ask you to make some comments, Mark, but I, having listened to people, I just want to say I would hate for us to go around the table and not acknowledge, I think your newsletter's been a tremendous step forward for transparency and having people know what's going on, how cases are being taken care of, and the times they're founded, some times they're not founded, all of those kinds of things. I think they're, it's very educational, and sitting here and anybody who's listening, I hope that you will take advantage too of accessing the newsletter. It will really keep you informed about what the complaints are and how they've been dealt with in a really straightforward way while protecting the rights of everyone involved. So I think it's very, very good. And the only thing that came to my mind, and I just want to bring it up when I'm thinking about it, is whoever is council president and vice president, perhaps they're the ones who should invite comments from the, from the community, because then you're not asking the person to say whether they thought it was, they were served well from the person who served them, but you're, you are asking as the people who are his employers, so maybe we could take on some more of that responsibility. So if you just bear that in mind, that's something worth thinking about, we might get a, you know, a little more information. All right, please.
I'm just honored to be here. I love Eugene. It's a pleasure living here, it's a pleasure working here. It's really a challenge, and I don't think I'd do it to outwork this council. You have a lot of things on your plate right now, you all work very, very hard, and I appreciate the time and effort that you put into this during budget season, during homeless camping season, and everything else that goes on. The amount of work that you put into things is extraordinary. I'm pretty excited about some of the things that we've done and what we're going to be doing in terms of continued improvement in policing and community relations. We talked about the police, and when I talk to some of the folks that work over there, it's like I took this job because I wanted to arrest bad guys. And a very laudable goal, but we want to move to this constitutionally-based policing model. One-on-one, police officers are as powerful as any one person is in this nation at any one particular time. They're the only people in this nation that have the power to take life and to take away liberty. And their voices are powerful in the courtroom setting as well, so we always have to continue to emphasize, with that power comes great responsibility, and that involves protecting constitutional rights of everyone that they come in contact with, including the people that they arrest. We have some initiatives with what's called Blue Team, which is a subset of a software tracking system in which probably for the first time supervisors are now held responsible for at-the-scene investigating use of force immediately after it occurs. And I don't know if quantum leap is the right term, but it's certainly a fundamental change in operations, and it's gone further than that even in terms of pursuits and even vehicle accidents. So it's going to give the senior leadership there an opportunity to look at things at a far earlier stage. It's going to be a different dynamic for me, because I kind of have to step back a little bit and see if they're really going to implement it in the manner in which it should be implemented. And so I hope that I won't have to be as aggressive, and that's not the word I'm looking for, but it's the only one that's coming to my mind right now, in terms of being the complainant on some of the more difficult issues. I expect that that will diminish. People are coming forward in the organization when they see something that they think is a policy violation, and certainly seeing significant improvement in that particular area. A lot of sergeants are coming forward, wanting things to move forward, sometimes in the IA process. And the other thing I think that you may see, which I think is a positive reflection in a department, is because so much of everything has been closed, not just in Eugene but in Oregon because of discussions about public records, that you're probably going to see more information that's out there, and it's probably a bit disconcerting to a culture that's not used to that sort of thing, and it's unusual perhaps. I still get people that talk to me about the tree thing in the 90s, and I was in here. McGonagallora was in like 2000, and people still talk about it, so that's both a blessing and a curse, I suppose, but they still talk about it, and so that's something I think you're going to see more of. In terms of community outreach, keep going to the toolbox. We have a public safety forum tomorrow with the police commission, we're going to try to partner more with the police commission and the human rights commission, and so maybe that'll bring the groups together on some issues. Again, I sort of have to remain that Switzerland neutral kind of mentality, because I have to treat everyone the same. And when we talk about it, it was in 2001 at Central European University in Budapest, in a speech that I gave where I said, "Individuals are hesitant to engage unless they're directly and negatively impacted by a specific government activity or action." I said that 12 years ago. Far, far away, and I think you all see that as well.
Just a little.
Yeah. Those truths. Some things happen in the north, there aren't that many people from the south that are coming here that are really all that interested in it, and so, but we're going to be trying to partner with some of these organizations. I wish some of the agencies that we worked with perhaps were more vigorous, but it is important to us. We get surveys back on about 25% of our cases. We also spend a lot of time just talking to folks. We've had attorneys for complaints come to the CRB meetings because they know a case is going to be discussed and we sustain it, so it's been more difficult. But it's a pleasure to work here, and again, I'm kind of excited with the new initiatives we're working with. I'm working with Captain Camp Car on the bias, to kind of look at bias-based policing and doing a better job of tracking that. I gave him some information that we had from our collaborative agreement in Cincinnati, which I'm proud to say is still one of the top models in the nation. And the irony of some of our discussions was, again, that whole subconscious thinking about who is suspicious and who's not suspicious, and the studies were pretty consistent with, I think, how people sometimes feel in terms of suspicion. So there'll be more tracking of that. The state, there's actually state law that requires certain tracking of those things, and Captain Camp Car is working with the police commission to reach out more in terms of some mechanism to design to help people understand that. As you said, I'm always available to any group to talk about these kinds of issues, as I know you all are, but again, it's an honor and a privilege, and I'm actually excited about some of the new initiatives we have. Maybe I feel a little bit more vulnerable, because again, I'm going to have to take a step back to see if the police administration and supervisors take on these issues that are now reported to them in Blue Team and requires that they act upon them as opposed to sometimes not hearing about things unless they hear about it through different sources, so we're going to see how that all works out. Really want to thank, that'd be honored, Lee Pitcher and Vicki Cox, they do an outstanding job. Our first complaint yesterday about the enforcement of pedestrian violations. That person was less than pleased, and as many people are when they receive citations from the police department, and so, but we'll manage. I know I've almost been run over about five times downtown now while I had the walk light, so I appreciate, I really do appreciate that effort. But again, thank you for the honor to serve in such a great community.
Thank you, and thank you for your work. We're going to move on now to the compensation discussion. Alana, Denise, are you going to leave that, or do you want us to, you hand it over to these guys?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay.
There you go.
At this point in Mark's tenure with the city, he is at the top step, top step of salary range. In order to have another step increase, actually what we'd have to go through is market analysis or job analysis and with comparable agencies to create a new pay scale. But we're not in a position to do that right now, so what Chris and I, in talking with the HR folks, what we've tried to do is come up with something comparable to kind of equal a, the same amount as a step increase only with a one-time contribution, or a one-time compensation, thank you. And one of the options that we discussed was a one-time contribution to the deferred comp and increasing his vacation time, and we've kind of decided to propose a 3% one-time contribution to the deferred comp and 40 hours of additional vacation time, which would bring it to about a 4.92% increase over what he's got currently. In order to do that, because of the contract, we would have to have the city attorney either rewrite the contract or amendment to the contract or something of that nature. So I'm going to propose that we go with that 3% one-time deferred comp and a 40 additional vacation hours. Chris?
And I'll second that, and everything that George said is what we talked about. It's a recognition that his performance evaluation was excellent, and normally when someone performs excellent work, they receive compensation adequate to that. If he were on the standard range of anyone else in the city, he would receive the next step, but many employees in the city, including the auditor, are topped out, they're at the top of their range. And so how do you acknowledge somebody's performance when they're topped out? He gets the same COLA that everybody else at the exec level gets, so that's standard, and he doesn't get more, and he doesn't get less, he gets whatever that is.
If they do get a COLA.
If they even get a COLA, he'll be in that. But how do you recognize the performance? And so as George said, we looked at other opportunities where we might be able to recognize the performance. And so these one-time contributions are kind of an interim step until we can do a more adequate job of doing market studies and determining what that salary level is. So I think it's fair, I think it's reasonable, and it recognizes the performance without stepping outside I think it's reasonable, and it recognizes the performance without stepping outside the city system, which I don't think is something that we really want to engage in.
Okay, we're going to go into questions, and I have Mike and Claire and George Brown in the queue. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really kind of perplexed at this particular phase, and here's why. You heard what I said, and I meant every word of it. You're excellent at this job, best we've had, in my opinion. I would work dang hard if I thought there was any chance in the world you might consider wanting to be somewhere else to keep you here. But our city's in a financial position that it's in, you know? I mean, we have these conversations, we've had the public discussions about it. And it sits oddly with me that we're having a conversation about this level of increase, although it's certainly earned. It's, I'm having trouble kind of justifying that in the larger sense of where everyone else in the economy is, where some of the things that we're asking other lower-down-the-line staff members, union negotiations to contend with. And so I'm not sure where I am on what the appropriate way to move forward with that is. I want to certainly reward your excellence. But I also want to be sensitive to the fact that we can't do that as much as we might want to with everyone in the organization because of the nature of resources these days. And I don't know what the best answer is off the top of my head. So I just wanted you to understand where I'm coming from there.
Claire?
Yeah. I actually like the proposal. I do have a question, if Council President is able to answer it, about how the deferred compensation piece works, or if that'd be better directed to HR.
So I'll take a stab, and then Alana will back me up on it. So what happens is there's a one-time, in Mark's contract, there is, or the Police Auditor's contract, there is designation around his salary scale. So that's six. And then there's a designation around an organizational contribution, which I believe is 2%. And then what this opportunity is, is on a one-time basis to take 3% to put into his deferred comp account. And so it's an additional amount on a one-time basis that would be contributed. Makes sense?
Yes. Yeah. So it wouldn't increase his, other than a possible COLA, it's not going to increase his base salary. It's a one-time increase in the deferred compensation. And at your next performance review, we might propose a similar mechanism or do something different. I'm very comfortable with that recommendation. I think it's solid considering the performance review that he's received.
George Brown?
What's the total amount that we're talking here? I figured with the 40 hours of vacation paid be around $2,000, and then the 3%, what would that figure be?
I can answer that. With the 3% one-time contribution, that'd be $3,374.58, and an additional 40 hours of vacation, which is not an additional amount of money going out, it's just that much more paid time, which would be equal to $2,163.20, for a total of $5,537.78.
Okay.
But the actual cash out would be just the one-time deferred comp contribution.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you through, George?
Yes, I am. Thanks.
Uh-huh. George Poling?
I was just going to make that information known so we know what we're talking about.
Alan, do you have anything you want to ask?
No, I don't, Mayor.
So it seems like we've answered the questions around the table. Is there a motion on the table? Is there ready to, everybody ready to vote on the motion?
Do you want to hear it restated?
No, I'm just really struggling with it because I want to, and I just wanted to say, I'm really struggling with it because I'd like to have more time for the consideration of this. But it seems like I, you know, can count the noses around the table and it will pass. My conscience wants me to vote no because I want more time on it, but not because you don't deserve it. And I want to make that 100% clear. Okay?
All right, then. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. Alan?
Yes.
Six in favor, one in opposition. It passes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. Yes.
One matter that was referred to is, we will take the information from this decision and incorporate it, working with the City Attorney's Office, into amendment to the contract. And just wanted to check in about the comfort level with this group. If we work directly with the President on the signature component, once that's complete with Council Polling and with Mark Gisner. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Okay. All right. I think everybody's fine with that.
All right. Great. Thank you.
All right. We'll move to our next item on our agenda today. And that is a continuing discussion on homeless camping. I guess I want to clarify that the beginning of this conversation was a pursuit of legal places for people to sleep from dusk to dawn. It was not, at least, an original concept about setting up campsites or anything of a permanent nature. And that's sort of where, and then we have asked them to look at several things, and we're back to have more conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just turn it over to Kurt.
Okay. So the first question, I suppose, is what am I doing here?
Because we love to have you here, Kurt.
Yeah, I always appreciate the warm reception.
Free-legged stool.
Yeah. Yeah, Mark Schonning, who is actually our city engineer, who's been filling in as Parks and Open Space Director for about the past year, is going back to engineering. Our new Parks and Open Space leader is coming onboard Monday of next week. And so you've got me, at least for today, and see where we go in continuing through this process. So this, as the mayor indicated, is a continuation of a discussion that began some time ago with probably different roots than what the conversation has become. You've had work sessions on the 24th of April and on the 20th of May. Previous options, just as a reminder, we talked about expanding the car camping ordinance from the currently allowable three vehicles to perhaps five or six. We talked about authorizing religious institutions or other nonprofits to permit dusk-to-dawn camping for some number of campers. And we talked about a nonspecific number of, maybe five. We have talked about removing the sunset or extending the sunset on the Conestoga Hut ordinance that you all passed last year. On the, excuse me, on 24th of April, the council asked that we bring back an ordinance that would essentially allow undisturbed sleeping from 10:00 p.m. until 7:00 a.m. on vacant city properties, not including developed parks or sensitive environmental areas. It would also include religious institutions, nonprofits, commercial industrial sites, to the extent the owners of those properties were favorable with that. And it would also stipulate a 120-day pilot period. We brought that ordinance back in draft form on the 20th of May, and it's also in your packet today as Attachment A. On the 20th of May, I kind of took the conversation and broke it into several areas that we'll go through here real briefly. One, there was an interest in a refreshed list of properties that generally met the criteria that we were hearing. We've attempted to do that. We've attached that as Item B to the AIS. Within the revised list, there are 11 parks and nine other city properties. Just for the record, I'm not here to suggest that any of these are good ideas or bad ideas. In fact, I think there would be a group that would suggest that taking them one at a time, none of them would work particularly well. But they represent a list of properties that generally line up with the criteria that we've heard from past conversations. Specifically, the criteria include that the properties are city-owned, they're non-sensitive open space, they're inside the city limits, they're greater than one-tenth of an acre, they're generally flat, they have usable shape, they're undeveloped, there are no utility or infrastructure conflicts, such as pump stations or drainage swales or the like. And Attachment B kind of runs through that listing of properties together with that criteria. The maps attached as Items C, D, E, and F are visuals of that that are updated from last time. Might just take a moment to talk about a few of the properties on the list, what's on and what's off. On the, just referring to Attachment B, the potential non-park sites include a number that you've seen several times in the past, that those are primarily Opportunity Eugene sites. Those would be map numbers three and five and eight and nine. Items that are on the list now that were not on previous lists, that now meet this revised criteria. Number one and number two, an Athan Mill site and a Broadway and Hilliard site are remnant parcels that the city owns from the courthouse transportation improvement project from a number of years ago. Map number four is probably one that here we would strike from this list. It's a lot in southwest Eugene, near the intersection of Monroe and Deer Trail, that, as I've looked at that in a little greater detail leading up to this work session, is probably too steep, hilly, vegetated, inaccessible to be considered in conformance with the current criteria. Number six is a remnant street parcel near the intersection of the Northwest Expressway and Chambers. And number seven is a lot essentially west of the traffic signal pole storage yard on the north side of Roosevelt in the vicinity of the Public Works Yard that we acquired a number of years ago, had a house on it until it subsequently burned down. So those are items new to that list. The undeveloped list of Parks and Open Space sites are essentially the same as the list you had on May 20th, with the exception that Santa Clara Park is off the list and Golden Gardens Park is off the list, since they're not inside the city limits. So we fell off on that basis. Second major topic that you talked about in the last work session was the question of liability. Some asked about what are the liability exposures of what we're talking about here. In the AIS, we have a brief statement from the city attorney's perspective, essentially indicating that, paraphrasing, many of the options that you have talked about in your conversation could increase liability potential, although not to a greater extent than many of the other city activities that we sponsor and carry out. And that more particularly, to the extent you arrive at some policy guidance and talk about specific programs or outcomes, that there would be a more in-depth analysis of the liability aspects of this type of program. Next item, I've termed scope of work, I guess, for lack of a better approach. I think, Mayor, you hit on a, you know, the point, I think, that I would have tried to have made here, that as this conversation began, it was a question about modifying the camping ordinance to allow dusk-to-dawn camping in parks. And over the course of time, and particularly the advocates for this, have talked about the prospect of rest stops, managed, fully occupied sites, not necessarily permanent, hosted. We've talked about restrooms, solid waste, storage, lockers, other types of facilities that are arguably quite a little bit different than where this conversation began. There are six questions in the AIS that we've picked up upon from previous conversations that would be, I think, ultimately very helpful in defining what it is we're trying to resolve here. And specifically, those would be, is a majority of the council onboard with establishing sleep sites? If so, should they be in parks? Should they be somewhere else, or both, or neither? What are the site criteria that you can agree upon? Should the sites be hosted or managed or led to some type of oversight process? What amenities are we going to be called upon to provide? Is it restrooms? Is it solid waste collection? Is it temporary? Is it permanent? Is it storage locker facility? Or just what is the nature of what we would be expected to provide? At what point and to what extent are individual neighborhoods to be involved with siting? And, you know, in general, what are your overall desired outcomes with the conversation? Is it a certain number of campers per site? Is it a certain number of sites? Is it hours of operation? Cleanup? Is it onsite behavior? Is it the broad spectrum of folks who might be involved? And those are some of the things we would need to know, I think, in order to help advance the conversation with all of you. Finally, there was a discussion at the last work session about the concept of community partnerships in resolving whatever problem statement you arrive at for this. Some of the counselors, I think, essentially acknowledged that accurately, at least in my case, that I'm not a social worker. Our department is not specifically involved in the social services delivery business. We are players in that, but at some point, the conversation said, how is it that we can work with the community on resolving some of these issues? To that end, I just simply attached a copy of the social services agencies that the Police Department keeps updated and on their website, and just simply point to 12 agencies on there that provide shelter. I don't know what the respective capacities of those agencies are, only that we all understand that they're short. I don't know what the service gap is. I don't know what the capacity is to work with those groups, but that is, at least in my mind, a starting point for how you begin to work with the community on resolving the issue. Next steps in the process immediately are, a follow-up work session scheduled for July 10. And what I would like, as one of the takeaways here today, is will there be something to visit further about with you on the 10th of July? So we do need that type of direction, since we will have about a couple of days to turn around an AIS for the next conversation. So I won't take more of your time and let you go with that information and see where the conversation leads.
Thank you, Kurt. I've got Mike and George Poling and George Brown in the queue. I just want to make a few comments, and I'll try to get them in my three minutes here. I'm sort of a raindrop here. I agree that people need a place to sleep and places to be sheltered and places to live. I agree that this community lacks sufficient shelter or permanent housing solutions. I agree that our parks and open spaces are not suitable places for people to sleep, leading to health hazards, dangerous situations, and environmental degradation. Lifting a ban would invite sleeping or camping everywhere and anywhere. If specific places are designated, they would require toilets and garbage containers in some way to have them used safely, or regain nothing. We can take down existing camps because of the impacts I just talked about, and then designate rest stops, but it would need infrastructure, and those would likely become camps, and we'll have to be monitored and have all the kinds of challenges of those that would stay there. We cannot pay for the services we already provide, much less adding more expenses. It just makes no sense to me to provide toilets in new places when we can't even keep up the ones that we have. There are no parts of the city that welcome this idea that I know of. It seems, I know, even if we designate a few rest stops, we would still have many, many unhoused people. We would still essentially have the same problem, and then some more. I don't think the city can solve the homeless issue. I do think we should try to make it better. Claire opened that door, a small crack last week with the money Cor will pay the community that could be designated for creating a public shelter. That's further along than we have been in this regard. And we could add to it and look for partners to bring it to reality. So I see a lot of challenges, a lot of things. If I could answer it, I would. If I had the solution, I would put it right out here now. I don't. I can just tell you all the things, the worries and concerns I have. And then the little crack of light I see is, for years, we've been talking about And then the little crack of light I see is, for years, we've been talking about the need for more shelter capacity. And the door has opened, a crack, that we could go into to try to engage in building more shelter capacity. So that's my, my brain dump for the moment. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree entirely with your initial assessment there of the, the situation we're in, and how you feel about the nature of the problem. I agree with you on all of that. I have consistently advocated that this organization ought to do what it's good at. We ought to be focusing on the things that we have the capacity to do that will actually help the problem, and from my perspective, that's to be the, the carrier of information between people with different needs. I think that us setting up organized campsites in one form or another at different public facilities is a prescription for tragedy, one way or another. I think if we look at what will happen, or what we've, what we've seen happen in the past, we know there can be some, some negative consequences, because as Kurt alluded to, we're essentially trying to become service, service providers, and social workers in the sense of saying, okay, we're going to step in, and we think this is a good solution. But what we're not talking about at this table is that, we always talk about the homeless population as though they're this amorphous large group of people, without breaking that down into the different types of folks who end up in that situation. And there are, there are different folks with different problems who end up in that situation. We're trying to solve the problem generally, when the problem has a multitude of, of solutions that should be focused much more narrowly. I think our best, I, I think the idea of us going into the neighborhoods with, with camps is terrible, because we don't have the money to staff and police, as it were, or organize. And, and in not doing so, it becomes a free-for-all, and that's a problem for everybody involved. We also have neighbors who object, in all neighborhoods, to this. When we do land use planning, and when we do things around building things that will have an impact on, on neighbors, we nearly come close to giving them standing in land use decisions in the process of what they can say about impacts to their neighborhood and quality of livability. We don't seem to be extending to them the same courtesy on this issue, and I think that's wrong. We need to be a clearinghouse for information, and we have the ability to do that better than anybody, I think. We can be a clearinghouse for organizations to act. We can know, because right now, if somebody wants to allow someone to camp on a property of theirs, they don't really know how they access helping somebody do that. We need to make it much clearer that we're going to be the place, if you have an opportunity for someone to camp here, come and tell us where it is, and what you're willing to let them do. And that way, then in reverse, those who need a place, know, there's a program at the city that says, here are the places where you can go. And I needed a second round to talk about another part of this, Mayor. Thank you.
George Poling?
And I'll, I probably will need a second round also. To start off with, I intend to put a motion out at our next work session. I'm not going to do it today, because I didn't hear back on one particular piece of property. But the motion is going to be to remove immediately from the list of consideration the County Farm Property, map number three, the Naval Reserve Center, number five, the Chase Commons, Ferndale, and Stryker Field. And this is based on not only the emails that we have received from the citizens living in the area, but from neighborhood associations. They're strong oppositions to allowing the use of these properties for this purpose. I won't go into the details on all the, all the, the possibilities of, of the questions raised by the people at this point. Hopefully, at a later time, we'll have a public hearing, but I intend to have those removed from the list. The second thing, I, I'm in favor of removing the sunset completely on the Conestoga Huts and increasing the number of spaces. In fact, it was my suggestion at one of the meetings last year, or two, three years ago, that we think outside the box, and we extended the, the car camping to include tents at that time. And my comment was, with the advancement in technologies, we don't know what's going to come down the road. Well, in, in less than a year's time, the Conestoga Huts came around. I am disappointed, though, that the first Conestoga Hut was occupied by somebody that had come down from Portland three months earlier, who had been in Portland for, I don't remember, maybe two years, or a year, and professed to be homeless off and on for 17 years. My understanding of the car camping is, we help our, our citizens that are in dire need, and need the help, not to let somebody come in from another state, another city, for three months and get the very first one. So I was a little disappointed that that's the way that went, but I'm in favor of expanding that. And the point that Mike made, yes, we do currently have an ordinance that allows people to sleep in your backyard. And also, it allows people to camp in your backyard. But the, the camping portion of it is that there must be water, sewer, the facilities available to them. So, the thing that Mike brought up at the meeting last, one of the last meetings, was perhaps we can act as a clearinghouse. We have hundreds of caring people in this community. Why can't our IT people set up some kind of a program where these people can volunteer to say, I'm willing to take X amount of people into my backyard to allow them to sleep on a regular basis? Get that program up and going, turn it over to one of the volunteer agencies or social services that will take it and kind of operate that system, and then the, the homeless folks can come in and register and, yes, and then be able to hook up with the, the property owners.
Okay. I got you for another round.
Thank you, Mayor.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, yeah, you know, Kurt, you, you kind of had a good list there, of like, and number one is, should we even do this? And I think that we should. The problem, should, should we even do this? This was, this is first question, is we, we need to agree that we want to do something like this. And I agree. I think we should. The problem is just too immense, and no, of course, we're not going to solve the homeless problem. Any one thing we do will not, will not solve it. It's, it's just overwhelming. And it's not getting better, it's getting worse. And, so, I, I think that we do need to provide safe places for people to sleep. It may only be, if we ever agree on any of these sites, it may be only for 100 people or 150 people, just from, from dusk to dawn. But it will be a step in the right direction. It will help, it will help a lot of people. And so I, in answer to the first question, yes, we definitely should do this. I think the ideas that Mike and George Poling just mentioned are, are good and should be pursued, but, but I think we need to do this, this also. So yesterday, I spent about four and a half hours, and I cruised around to every single site on here, and I kind of made some assessments. I agree, there's, on the undeveloped parks and open spaces, my, my list of ones to take off is slightly different from George Poling, but there, one, two, three, four, there's, there's six that I, of the neighborhood. They're, they're undeveloped, it's true, but it's, it's obvious they're surrounded by housing, and it's clear that the neighborhood children play there. And I, I believe that they would be totally unsuitable, at least until we get a pilot program somewhere else, and if it's successful, then maybe think about it. But, so there's, I, I won't go through them all right now, but, but on that, there's a couple I think would work. And of course, they would have to be neighborhood buy-in.
Why don't you mention the ones that you think would work?
Well, I think that a small area of Chase Commons would work. That's the one where George and I disagree. Jefferson, Lone Oak.
What was that?
Part of Stryker Field, Lone Oak.
Okay.
And part of Stryker, Stryker Field. All of these, they would have to, well, Lone Oak, Mike, I'm going to run out of time, so I'll need at least one more round. One of, you know, I just, my assessment, what do I know? But I just, I thought, okay, look, there can't be any near neighbors, and some of these were, there were houses right across the street, all the way around. And some of them are small, it was obvious that children play there. So those are just, well, unsuitable.
We'll catch up with you.
I'll continue this question.
All right. Claire?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for your thoughts, and, and everyone else, too, for the thoughtful conversation. I will probably need a second round as well. So I just wanted to start by saying, the police commission had identified homeless issues as one of the things they wanted to look at this year. So at our last meeting, I asked if they would put that as an issue for discussion on an upcoming agenda, and they agreed to do that. And so we're going to hope to get input from police officers who interact with the community around these issues, and possibly the service providers who are handling our car camping program right now. And that would be an effort to look at our policies around these issues, and see if there's any way to come at this from there. You know, we do have some things that we're doing right now, but I think that could be strengthened, and one of those is the car camping program. And I shared some thoughts and concerns with the city manager recently around the car camping program, particularly the issue of when folks have a derelict vehicle, it breaks down, and then it gets impounded, and now that was their home. So now they have nowhere to be, which, not that they had a great place before, but that just adds to the burden on those individuals, as well as, I think, the rest of the community. So, I don't know if there's somewhere in the policies around car camping and towing of vehicles, that we might find some relief in there for folks who are relying on those vehicles as their place to live. There's also, I've heard complaints on the other side of the car camping program, when neighbors call to say, I'd really rather not have these folks living in their vehicle right outside my home. They're advised to just move a few feet away, and not actually relocate to another block. So it doesn't really alleviate the concern of the neighbor, or the individual who has someone sleeping right outside their house. And so I think that kind of undercuts the value of that program for the community overall. I do think there are some very specific things, and Counselor Poling mentioned them, that we could do right away, which is to expand the number of camping, individuals camping on a particular site, and to extend, make permanent the Conestoga Hut allowance. I think that's good. I also asked the city manager if we might look into if there's any provisions for motel vouchers for folks who really are just temporarily homeless, or just became homeless, and, and are, are sleeping somewhere, and an opportunity to provide them with some temporary shelter in the immediate, and hook them in with social service. I don't know if we have a program of that type right now, and obviously, that would take some funding. And I did want to speak to some of the concerns that I've heard from folks at Ferndale, and give some context to the, what they are doing out there, but I'll wait for my second round.
Chris?
We've all got a lot to say, we all may wind up meeting second round. In, in working through this, it, the more we work on it, the more important it seems to be, but the more difficult it seems to be, because it's becoming a bigger and bigger and more complicated issue. I think we need to be a little bit more than a clearinghouse, but I think that's a good start. And I think we can then define what that additional role would be. I don't think it's, it's effective or reasonable to expect the city to carry this burden alone. We simply can't. We don't have the money, the time, the resources, or the expertise to be able to carry this burden alone. And the degree to which folks assume, or think the city can carry this burden alone, I think, leads to difficulty. That gets back to the notion that we need partnership. We need to do this collectively. We have not gone a, a long way down the partnership road, other than talking about, okay, you could, people can use their, their yards, or use this or that, and there's not been a lot of, of groundswell of support for it, because we've not nurtured it, we've not fed it, we've not taken care of it. I think there is an enormous opportunity for us in that area. And in order to begin to even approach that, one of the things that I regret is that I did not push harder to get the mayor's task force, you know, the one that came out of the, the Opportunity meetings, up and running. And so I would, I would advocate, we'd get that up, that committee, let's get it up and running, because I can now see a whole list of things that that group could start to deal with, specifically around this issue. There are issues around enforcement that could be dealt with right now. I've had some conversations with the folks, we've talked about what there might be in terms of enforcement opportunities. Taking pages from other books, we might be able to create some ombuds, assistant, peacekeeper type functions that could help, like Kahoots helps the police. This could help the police, maybe there would be some functions there. I think there's a lot of regulatory aspects that we talked about in the Opportunity Eugene that we have just scratched the surface of, that may be helpful. There absolutely are logistical and operational issues, everything from toilets, to locations, to other kinds of supervision and hosting, they all have to be dealt with, they all have to be talked about. What are the scope of the issues that we're talking about? Who are the populations we're talking about? What are the kinds of actions that would be effective for each different population? The human service providers know a lot of this stuff, and we've not been coordinating with them. What are the partnership opportunities with public, private, and nongovernmental organizations that could help us there? In, in closing, if we want to be engaged, we not only have to be knowledgeable, but we also have to be committed. And to me, the enemy of that is confusion, because you're uninformed, and you're, and therefore, you can't be committed. That's our problem right now. We are confused, and that's leading to an inability to be truly engaged.
Great.
You know, I, I would, thank you, Mayor. I concur with most of what has been said around this table, but I want to come at it from a little bit of a different angle on two, two different tracks. The first track is this, is that we have a situation in this community that's growing increasingly out of control, in terms of trying to manage a, an ordinance that clearly is not being adhered to, and that we basically cannot enforce, which is the camping ban. We have people that are camping in our parks, some people that are using our parks, our developed parks, as restrooms and as trash cans, because they have no other, no other option. You know, putting people in, in, you know, jail, and finding them $200 when they don't have the money, you know, or never will have the money, is, is, is completely counterintuitive to me. I think that we have an issue in terms of the safety of our staff, particularly public work staff, who have to go out and engage folks on a daily basis, who are already camping illegally. And that provides liability to the city that I don't even know what that is, it will entail. But if, if one of our employees gets hurt, or gets in a situation that, you know, could be, could compromise them in some form or fashion, physically or otherwise, then the city's on the hook for something there. So, you know, one of the, one of the reasons why that I have, and I know that Counselor Sarek and Counselor Zelenka, who proposed this ordinance, have kind of, you know, pushed forward this, is because of the other side, which is, we do have people out there who are homeless, don't have the resources, and are forced to ultimately use city facilities, whether that's against the law or not, to, you know, live. And, you know, I, I know it just living in my own neighborhood, that, you know, I've, I, there, we've stopped taking our daughter to the park on West Irwin, because of some of the things that have gone on over there. But that is a very small segment, I'll need a second round, of the homeless issue. Yes, there are criminal people out there, but I think that you will see that it is, as what Counselor Clark said, of a variety of folks, in a variety of categories, whether they have mental health issues, substance abuse issues, or just the issue of just being flat broke, and, you know, not having any other resources, that we have to understand and deal with those nuances. I'll need a second round.
Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is indeed a world-class hard problem, which is why it's not being solved anywhere in the country. I, I think part of the solution is obviously more housing, that's what the whole Housing First is all about. And I think more affordable housing and emergency shelters that we can do, and hopefully reforming MUPD, so we can get some money for that, would be a very good start to do some of that stuff. And I think that the micro housing project at Garfield site is, is also part of the solution. That's the 24/7 sites where people can leave their stuff, and that's the Conestoga Huts and things like that. And that's going to be getting underway shortly, and we've, we've started that process. My best outcome there is that that's really successful, and that it overcomes and dispels all the fears and objections and misconceptions about homeless people, and that it becomes really, really a good example of what, how it can work. My worst outcome is that we don't allow it to work, that we don't give it the time, that we do things that screw up our chances for Garfield to be successful. Because I really think- think that will work. That's, I think, a good model. Problem is that while we don't like it, we still have all these people camping all over the place illegally and making a mess and severely impacting the environment in some sensitive places on BLM land and other places around. So it's not that they disappear, they're there. I think the issue before us is a different one from the Garfield site, which is 24/7 leave your stuff there kind of microhousing project. This one is sleeping rest stops, which is dusk till dawn, and it's significantly different than the Garfield model. So I'm actually interested in all the solutions that have already been discussed, but I would go one step further, and I would be interested in modeling a second pilot, a pilot where we take one or two sites, we have onsite supervision, and we limit the number of people there that would allow them to be able to sleep dusk till dawn, that there be a requirement for garbage and toilets. But I think, and I don't think that's incumbent upon the city to provide all of that. I think this is where a public-private partnership really works well. And I think we establish what would potentially work as a pilot, and then we ask people to step up to the plate in the community to provide the onsite management and the garbage and the toilets and what needs to occur in order for a dusk-to-dawn type camping pilot program to be successful. So I'm real interested in pursuing that angle as well as all the other things that people have talked about. So I'd be interested in what other councillors think about doing another, a second type of pilot, which is really different than the pilot we're doing at Garfield. And of course, we can have a conversation about the site, and I don't have a particular site in mind, but I think one of those ones that has--
Another round, Councilor Zelenka.
Yes, please, thank you.
Shut up. Why he was on a roll?
So I just wanted to say, and I think it's a really important piece of this, that some of the conversation we've had around the table today is information that we need to have about who homeless people are, but I want to say that information is out there. We do not have to figure it out. The folks who deal with that all the time have almost all that information, but we have not really been in much of a conversation with them. And I would say that some of them are concerned because we're sort of having this conversation without them. So that's just, that could help us figure out not only what they already know, but it could help us know what piece of that we think we can best add to and not take on things that we don't need to, or we're not, as you say, the appropriate folks to take it on. But this is not to say to anybody that we don't see all the things that have been discussed around the table as important. I do like, prefer what I heard from Alan about not being, if you're going to try, if you make a decision, you're going to try a rest stop. I'd try a rest stop. I would not try seven rest stops at the same time because I think there's going to be, if you chose to go in that direction, it's going to be very complicated anyway, and you will have obstacles to overcome. And trying to overcome seven obstacles at the same time just doesn't make good sense to me. I think you'd want to learn from the least problematic experience you could have if you chose to go that way. But I would also say that's not easy, because then, as Alan pointed out, if we're not going to pay for it, you have to find other resources to even have that pilot to try that out. So just for you to think about that. We'll go second round here, and we'll get as far as we can go in the time that we have.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate what you're saying there to a degree. I think that's important for us to talk about, and a couple others have mentioned it. First, to respond to something that George said, to give it context. I agree with you 100% George that what we, if we're going to do anything that revolves around geography or creating a location, what we need to be doing is creating a safe place for people to sleep and to be. But the question is, safe for who? Because every time we talk about creating a rest stop or a location or using public space, there's a cost. And it isn't just the cost of the trash cans and the cost of the porta-potties and the cost of somebody to oversee it. And if we don't have those, we have chaos. But there's another cost, and I kind of hinted at it with our issues around, you know, Goal One and involving neighbors with land use decisions and what gets built where. Neighbors are going to pay the cost for what we decide to do there, and I think that's wrong. And the reason is because there are groups that want to participate and be a part of the solution. There are people who want to help, and the city can't bear the cost all on its own. So we need to partner with those groups, and we need, and I would agree with Chris, we need to step it up another notch. We need to not just be a part of being a hub and an organizer of information, but also of resources. We need to be that clearinghouse that I've mentioned before as the best role for us, because we can't absorb the cost. And what's more, I don't think it's fair for us to force that cost on nearby neighbors. Now, there's a young fellow sitting back in the corner of the room over there, listening to his headphones, that gets to play with a lot of his friends over at Stryker Field all the time. And I can tell you that although that's an undeveloped park, my son and some of his friends have done some work over there to make little BMX bike trails and little places that are, you know, they use as forts and so forth, and it's a place where people walk their dogs, and it's a place where the community uses that resource, not even in an undeveloped state, for the reason it was intended. And if we take it to do this, we're essentially imposing a cost on those neighbors that they don't deserve to bear, not just with regard to safety. And one of George's constituents sent a really good email here about that, and I agree with him. As a father of kids, I have a problem with that too, of a camp being nearby. So again, I think we should get away from creating a place and more towards creating resources and creating information flow.
George Polling?
Just two quick things before I really get going here. Is one, I want to make sure that I have wording for that motion for our next work session. And also, John, if we could get some kind of an idea how much it would cost to do the programming, to set up a program like that, a registry of some kind, because that is a good example of how you use reserve money, one-time monies for a one-time function. So if I could get some kind of an idea. And Chris, you referred to the problem is bigger and more complex issue as we go along. Well, I think the original issue was brought up in a very simplistic way. And, you know, to make it sound, okay, we can achieve this, but it's not. There's just not a way we can do it. And then Kurt, to your request, should one or more sleep sites be established? If it is established, I think only one to start off with, that is, if we do decide to establish it. What are the site criteria? I think it's essential that it's close to services such as grocery stores, bus lines, that type of thing. So they're not having, people are not having to travel far distances. Should the sites be hosted or otherwise managed? Yes, but I don't know how. And if the city takes that on, where are we going to get the money? You know, in the summer of 2011, when, or fall, when Washington-Jefferson Street Park was first going to be started, I was guaranteed by some of their peacekeepers that there would never be any problems, that we could control anything and everything that goes on inside of there. Well, we know how that turned out. So I think the managing and hosting is a very, very difficult question to address. I don't know how we're going to do that. What amenities should be provided? Nothing that makes it feel like it's permanent. I mean, you know, granted, you know, you bring up the issue of the human waste and of the garbage and everything, but once you start making things feel permanent, then there's a certain feeling of entitlement that goes along with that by the people that are using it. So we have to be very careful what we do there. How should the neighborhoods be involved in siting decisions? From the very start, whether it be the neighbors living around or the neighborhood association or both, but they have to be involved from the very beginning. And then what are the desired outcomes in terms of number of campers per site, hours of operation, cleanup behaviors? Behaviors, act like a human being. Clean up, clean up after yourself. As far as the number of campers per site, hours of operation, well, that's dusk till dawn. Campers per site, I think maybe, depends on the size of the site. Bigger the site, maybe we can extend out. But that's--
Thank you.
--in response if we go forward with this.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I'll, just, we're running out of time, so I'll abbreviate. Yeah, you know, on the undeveloped parks and open spaces, there's a few I think would be suitable. There are areas that are, although there are houses in the vicinity, there are areas that are away from houses and still close to a street and close to transit. So I think they could work, but of course, there would have to be neighborhood buy-in. And if there wasn't, then, and they may want to wait and see how, you know, a project more in an industrial area, if that turns out, then maybe that would give the neighbors confidence that, aha, our worst fears will not be realized. I totally understand the neighbors' concerns, believe me. I have a young boy, and I get it. And I'm going to try to force something on a neighborhood when they don't want it. So anyway, but I believe that there are a few that might work. Now, looking, going back to the non-park sites, I see four right off the bat that I think we ought to seriously consider, and that was Eighth and Mill, number one. That's across from the federal courthouse. I have a question about that site. It appears to be a parking lot. Are you familiar with the site?
Generally, yeah.
When there's a building there, an old commercial building, that is starting to show deterioration, I'm wondering if that's part of that site too?
I, yeah, I believe that roughly two tenths of an acre. I think it's just remnant open space that was acquired for the roads.
Okay, I could have been looking at the wrong. It was unclear from this map exactly where the parcel was. So, but I think that would work, and there's no, the reason I like these four is because there's no conflicts with neighbors. There's no conflicts at all. One of them, there's a commercial building, but there's a high wall, and so they're totally separate, there aren't even any windows. Broadway and Halyard is a good site. No residences anywhere near. Number six, Northwest Expressway and Chambers, that would work. It's kind of, it's where River Road, Northwest Expressway, and then it turns, River Road turns into Chambers. And then there's a small, it's pretty bleak looking right now, but it could work, the one on Roosevelt, west of Garfield. It would need a little spiffing up. It's kind of a bleak, it's like an equipment yard or something. But hey, if you're just, if it's a place to sleep, for safe sleeping, it would work. And I think, you know, maybe what we ought to think of is, let's concentrate on sites like this initially, and you could probably have at least 10 people at each site, or 15, or maybe even 20. But I think we ought to focus on the sites with the fewest conflicts with neighbors, because otherwise, we're going to probably spend a lot of time fighting with people. I don't want to do that. And I want them to feel confident that these things would actually work before we ask them to site one in their neighborhood.
Claire, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, George, for that thoughtful thinking through. I'm not totally ready to go there yet in terms of lifting the ban and identifying sites, but I'm leaning towards it. And I think thinking through how we involve neighborhoods and where those sites are located and potential conflicts with other neighbors is really important. And, you know, so while acknowledging the really terrible situation that many homeless people are finding themselves in, and also, at the same time, many neighborhood parks are currently being impacted by their use as living and sleeping places right now, I do want to acknowledge folks who've come out out of concern for Ferndale, who, many of whom are here watching our session today and who've contacted us about their park. And their park is one that was on the verge of becoming a developed park when the council decided that funding was not available. And so they took it upon themselves to adopt that park and to do some really low maintenance improvements there that they have kept up and really invested a lot of time, sweat equity, and money in that site. It doesn't have any facilities, there's no bathrooms, no garbage service, no drinking fountain. And they also have a concern around policing because they're in the part of the city that's a patchwork of county and city and sheriff and EPD. So, you know, I know they would appreciate having Ferndale taken off the list of potential sites. At the same time, even a site like the one on Roosevelt, which may be appropriate for many of the reasons that Councilor Brown suggested, it's also very close to the Opportunity Village site, so we'd want to consider that too as we think about it. But, you know, I do think there might be room for creating some very limited sites, I think with fewer people than 15, that where folks could sleep from dusk till dawn, not establish campsites, not put up permanent structures of any kind. But at the same time, I also appreciate Alan's suggestion of a single site, very limited in scope, that isn't as restrictive in terms of dusk till dawn, but also involves partners. So I, maybe that's not much more clarity than we had at the beginning of the session, but that's kind of where I'm sitting right now.
Chris?
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation that's been going on around this issue, and I think if we feel we need to be a little bit more deliberate and slow down in order to do it right, I think that's okay. Not to stop, but to just, there's some issues that need to be worked out, and we need to keep moving. That plate spinning on that stick, we need to keep going. But the one thing I want to talk about is there's more than just this plate spinning on this stick. There's about eight sticks, and there's about eight plates, and we don't really have a centralized location where somebody can keep all of those plates spinning. So I'll make the last for the day plea that we get that task force formed and get it back together again so we can have a place where we can bring not only ourselves, but also expertise in the community to start talking about this, because, you know, enforcement, regulatory, logistical, scope of issues, partnerships, those are all things that are plates that are spinning on sticks that we need to have a place where we can go to continue to work on, because they're all interrelated. That's what makes this so complicated. So I appreciate everybody's said about this particular plate, and I agree with it, and I think we also need to acknowledge that there's a lot of other plates that we need to be kind of working on as well. So I'd be happy to serve on that group.
So we're coming up with just about three or four minutes to go, and I've got Greg and Alan in the queue, so say what you can quickly, please.
Well, I'll take half of Alan's time. But anyway. Just to kind of summarize, just a couple of things here. You know, I agree with Alan. I think that, you know, doing this and doing one site, and we're talking about 120-day pilot program, you know, makes more sense than, you know, alarming the entire community that we're looking at, you know, multiple sites and multiple neighborhoods and all of that kind of thing. I think that, you know, we need to proceed slowly, a little bit slower than what we have had going right now, and to be very deliberative in what we're doing. One of the things that, you know, I think that we can accomplish is developing and forging a public-private partnership with those entities in the community who have experience in working with these kind of programs and these kinds of populations. St. Vinnie's and some other entities in this community have that experience, have those resources, and I'm sure that we can craft something with them that would, you know, be workable in a pilot situation. And then I had a question for you, Kurt. How much, I know that we're up to about $300,000 a year now in terms of the city's input in terms of managing this from the public work side, and we got about a half a million in with HRC in terms of what our contributions are overall to, you know, the homeless situation. How quickly are your costs increasing in terms of trying to manage what is already out there?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that here today, and so just to not take up the rest of Alan's time, I'll see if we can do a little analysis and see if we can track that over a period of time.
Because I'd like to see us try to lower that cost.
Okay, Alan, you're on.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Mayor. So I think what we're in right now is we're kind of in this experimentation phase as opposed to trying to solve the whole problem kind of phase and solve it completely. An example is what we're trying to do with the microhousing project at Garfield. I think that's a great place for us to be, because it allows us to move forward and but be cautious-- but be, be cautious and, but move forward, and, and be thoughtful. This is a different model, and I think it's a different pilot, and, and we, and we should test it, see if it works. And this would be a dust-to-dawn, as, as George was saying, where everybody clears out, and, and so with a public-private partnership, where the city would allow it, set the rules, define the location, and the community would organize it, supervise it, manage it, and pay for the garbage and the toilets. I think, you know, one to two sites, one seems like we could possibly do it. Limit the number of people to 10 or less, and we need to figure out from the city's perspective of process how to pick the organization to partner with, but, and, and, you know, we, we did, it was kind of daunting at first, but we ended up picking a site at Garfield, and while a lot of people thought that would be nearly impossible, but we were able to do that, and I think we can do that here, too. So I, I'm eager to move forward on, on another pilot.
Okay, so, a lot of information, a lot of thoughts, not much toned down at this point, we'll continue. I'd just like to say two things really fast, maybe three. One, Chris, why don't you just put that on, send out a worksheet?
Okay.
And we'll get it going. And, and then I want to say to the public, that, as, is often in the case of that, when you, when our staff is asked to produce a list, that list isn't real until it's made real. So it's, it's just something to get the conversation going to think about, and I think we haven't, in reality, I don't think we've put anything on a list yet. So I just want to be clear that we, we, we have no list that this council has said that we are aiming at to put something on yet. We are not nearly at that point. And the third thing that I would like to suggest is, if we want to look at a small group of sites to see, non-neighborhood sites to see if something, maybe a, maybe a little field trip would be in order to go, just to, just to go look, so, so people could get an idea of what they're talking about around, around the table. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.